You're watching H-CAM's Government Channel, where we provide coverage of the latest meetings and events happening in Hingham's local government. For more Hingham news, tune into H-CAM's Public Channel on Comcast 97 and Verizon Files 31, and Educational Channel on Comcast 22 and Verizon Files 29.
This is the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. The date is February 1st, 2017. Time is 7:05. Welcome to our meeting. Please note that these proceedings are being recorded by the zoning administrator and are also being recorded by H-CAM. The first item on our agenda is a continuation of a hearing on a comprehensive permit application from Broadstone Bear Cove Alliance LLC to construct a 220-unit rental community, including 45 affordable housing units. This is a revised proposal, on approximately 12.06 acres of land located at 230 Beale Street in the Office Park Zoning District.
Before we begin, Mr. Chairman, can I just say-
Yes.
For the record, my apologies for not being here for the last session. For the first time in more than 20 years, I called in sick. So, I did have a chance to review the video of the proceedings. I must confess, I fell asleep halfway through the first time, but I did watch the whole thing, and I have done my duty under the statute. So, under, right. So, I'm up to speed, and I'm glad we didn't have to do it on Groundhog Day. Do it again, and again, and again, and again.
Speaking of Groundhog Day, isn't that tomorrow?
That is tomorrow, yes.
Hopefully, we won't be repeating this. Thank you, Joe. Counsel.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. My name is Jeff Toccio, and Michael Bajulien is with me to my left from Broadstone. And thank you very much for opening this evening. We're following up. We've made submissions on the 25th of January. You folks should have your packages, basically covering civil engineering, traffic, response to some comments regarding architectural renderings that Al had made at the last meeting. Also, updated waiver request materials, slight alterations making those a little more precise. And also, the school department's recommended student transportation plan. And basically, as part of the package, I can report to you folks that we did meet with the DPW Sewer Department regarding mitigation expenditures for the project, and we were able to reach an agreement. You folks should have a memorandum in your file from Randy Sylvester that outlines some of the details of that, as far as the contribution. Also, there's a condition which is there, which is recommended. Several of the items that we'll go through this evening will have attached to them recommended conditions that may ultimately be put into a decision if we go in that direction. So, I may comment on that a couple of times this evening. Also, I'll give you an update on Aquarian. We're waiting for the will-serv letter on the water balance communications with them, hydrant flow testing. It happened actually some time ago, and what they've done is asked for some additional time to complete their latest report, based on the dates that they've given us. We expect to have that issued before what we anticipate to be the next meeting. So, we'll submit that into Emily, once that arrives from Mr. Olson.
What's the date that you expect that?
He said four weeks, and that was sometime, I believe, last week. So, I would expect that that would come in sometime after Valentine's Day, but before, if you folks give us a hearing. We had talked about March 1st.
So, by the end of the month?
By the end of the month, but certainly before that time. Also, I mentioned it quickly. You folks should have, in your package, a copy of an email. We did meet with Dr. Gallo, with John Ferris, Patrick Cunningham from the School Department. We went through all of the options that existed with respect to locating the school bus drop-off and pickup. After going through all of the different iterations, it was decided that the existing drop-off area at the field parking lot was superior to everything else. Part of that decision was made easier because of the sidewalk, that we're proposing to construct along the south side of the fields of Beale Street, going from the east of our curb opening all down in being where the bus turnaround exists. So, that also contains, I believe, a condition that we'll be speaking with Town Council with. Additionally, I can report that Lieutenant Denapoli, who's the fire marshal from the Hingham Fire Department, has asked us for further information concerning the details on the delineation of the fire lane in the back, and we're working to get that to him also. Some details on what we're going to propose, as far as the access gating, to basically have a barrier between sheltery path and that entry that would prohibit cars from just going in there, but of course, something that would break away in the event of an emergency. We've talked about different scenarios. All of them would allow for pedestrians to go around it, bicycles, things of that nature. So, we'll follow up with Lieutenant on that. And then, I can report, next item that I have is that, and I do see that Mr. Brennan is here. I didn't ask Mr. Quinn on our side from Allen &amp; Majors to come in, only because we received the letter that indicating satisfaction with that round of the peer review. And I note that he had a condition, which is in there, that instead of me describing it, if you want Pat to talk about it, that's up to you folks. So, I guess I can take a break at that point.
Let's continue your list, and then we can-
Okay. Next will be Rob Nagy from VHB is here for the transportation, and I'll ask that if he can go through the changes that he's made, working in response to Mr. Dirk's comments. He's got some exhibits that he can go through, and he can make the presentation of those changes to you folks. And then, I'll expect that you'll have Mr. Dirk go through and add his further comments. I know that he's got comments and recommendations that he submitted as well. And then, finally, what we'd like to do is ask Brian O'Connor from Cube 3 to go through with some more detail, talking about the architectural details. One, the package that you folks have, he can go through, answer questions, go through some more details, and then in following up with Emily. I know that there were additional questions that we received yesterday, and what we've done is, in this time period, we've seen if we can amass some of the information that would allow Brian to answer questions. And at that point, we'd hope that we show you folks enough, whatever questions, comments, that would be very helpful to us as well. And then, after we get to that point, if we can talk about just going forward, expectations, dates, procedure, et cetera. That's the way that we see this evening, at least from our side. So, if, I think at that point, if we go back into my list, if Mr. Brennan from Amory would want to go through and address the civil, I think unless you have questions regarding any of the sewer, the bus drop-off, or any of the questions on the fire, I think that's probably the next point.
Well, the first question I have, I know we've got two peer review experts here. I just want to make sure your schedules are fine. Either of you have to leave early so that we can, okay. So, before we go on, Al or Joe, do you have any questions at this point?
Well, I guess I'd just like to understand the sewer. I mean, I've seen some of the correspondence, and I know there is, I'll call it, an issue out on Lincoln Street with one of the existing mains. I mean, separate from the MWR 90-degree angle thing, but as part of the town interceptor. And I just want to be sure that, you know, we've been talking about all the infrastructure in the area, again, with about all the number of additional units that are proposed to come online. I want to be sure that-
Absolutely.
-that particular infrastructure is up to snuff, so.
So, the breakdown on the infrastructure, I'll break it down the way that I think of it, not as an engineer, but you know, more from a land planning perspective, was that we are basically, the properties that come out of this area of Bear Cove has a line which comes out of the private pumping station over on this side. The recommendations involved our coming around and avoiding, basically avoiding some of the problematic manholes. They've got some issues with respect to exactly that 90, you know, the 90-degree. There were also certain vertical problems, and then there's a, I'll call it a grinder or impeller type of situation at the pump. Our initial thinking was that we would fund the workaround that Weston &amp; Sampson had recommended, and that we then get to deliver affluent, free and clear of all of those problems that the town identified as existing in the system. And when we met, Mr. Sylvester was talking about, and I thought he made a good point. He said, "Yes, but you arrive at a point that we then, we know that we have a problem." So, an additional amount of money that was identified in working with some of the alignment issues that, again, from our narrow perspective, are separate from our line. What we did was we took on, we took on some of the cost. Is this one correct? The abandoned-
Yeah, it was a sum of three pieces.
Yes. So, basically, what we were able to do is come in, and it's extending that point where we do the end around. So, that's about 175 linear feet. And then, there's an abandonment of existing gravity sewers from the manholes that are out there that basically take the effluent that comes up of Lincoln Street. So, we're basically involved in the funding of that. And then, on top of those, there's basically a 40% construction contingency. So, when you put the three together, do you want the figure that we're contributing? So, it's basically, it's $124,600. And when we left the meeting, I think that we were responsive after each of the parties presented their positions with their engineers. The town's position clearly was, they wanted, you know, us to contribute to solving the problem with the deficient manholes. And at the end of the meeting, that is something that Alliance did agree to. So, I think you've got the January 24th memorandum, and again, I can, you know, I can look, I can look folks in the eye and say, "We definitely tackled the things that I can point to and say, 'This comes from our site. This handles our bedroom count. It also handles all of the bedrooms that are upstream from us.'" So, that would include Beale's Cove Village, Hingham Woods. And then, in addition to doing that, and of course, we have to do that, so I'm not taking any credit. That's just something we have to do. But I think that in jumping out and in funding these other pieces that have to do with the effluent that's coming up Lincoln Street, I think that that's, in the long-term view of the interests of the town, I think we were able to contribute to solving a lot of those existing problems.
Thank you for that. And the memo from Randy Sylvester goes through that.
And that's got, you know, some conditions, et cetera, but everything from his memorandum was in line with what we agreed upon when we left the meeting.
Al? Okay. So, I know we have a representative from Amory Engineers, Pat Brennan. Do you want to give us an update, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers. As Mr. Toccio alluded to, I did submit a letter to the board this past Monday stating that after reviewing the revised documents that they've submitted, a number of emails and conversations and meetings back and forth with their engineer, they've addressed all of the site civil engineering concerns that I had, except for test pits at the drainage-infiltration systems. They've been asking that if the board were to approve the project, that that be a condition of approval. I've provided you with some language for that condition, should you go that way. So, like I said, the site civil is taken care of. Also, following up on the sewer- Yeah, okay. Also, following up on the sewer issues that were just raised, I sat in on that meeting with both sides. Emily and I were there, and I think Jeff did a nice job of explaining how that meeting went. When everybody left the room, I think everybody was satisfied with the outcome of that meeting. And one last thing that Emily just asked me to touch on was the photometric plan. I reviewed it. There is no spill-over onto any private properties from the proposed lighting on the project. The only spill-over to any, that's off-site at all, there's some at Beale Street, but you want some at that intersection for safety. There's very little bit, only maybe 10 feet into the sports fields in one small location. So, there's very, and that's actually right underneath one of their existing lights. So, there's really no impact on the abutting properties from the proposed lighting scheme that they have.
Could you help me understand the purpose of the test pits?
Sure. With their design, they had test borings around the site, but not actual test holes. The test boring showed favorable soils, suitable for infiltration. I don't believe that they hit water in any of those test borings. But water these days, groundwater these days, we look at it, you don't just dig a hole in the spring and look for water. There's actual, there's colorations in the soil and everything. There's a science that goes along with it. So, the, usually, you do test holes at these infiltration systems to make sure that you have the soils that you think you have. There are sandy soils on this site, according to the borings, and to make sure that we have adequate separation from the bottom of these infiltration systems to the groundwater. The minimum, the minimum is two feet of separation. And basically, what that is, is that two feet of material, the sandy material, the soil, filters the stormwater even more as it passes through it before it gets to the groundwater. DEP stormwater standards require that you have, under an infiltration system, four feet of separation. And if you don't have, if you don't have four feet, they want a mounting analysis, just to make sure that the system's actually going to drain. From what I've seen, groundwater, their borings are well, you know, at least eight feet below their proposed bottoms, but I just want, because they're not actual test pits, I just want to make sure that we get those tests prior to them constructing those systems, to make sure that they will function as designed.
So, are you suggesting that we have conditions, first, that they do the test pits, and second, that they meet certain standards?
Yes.
And then, if they don't meet those standards, what happens next?
If they, well, if they don't meet those standards, they would, they would have to redesign those systems. If they didn't have the required separation to groundwater, they'd have to lift them up. If the soil wasn't as sandy as they assume it is, they may have to enlarge those systems. And that's, those are really the only two things that would happen. But again, according to the borings, it doesn't, it seems like that probably is not going to be the case. It seems like what they've designed is appropriate, but I just want to verify that.
So, do we have the conditions for that? I understand we have the condition for-
I can give you-
-test, but not the next step.
I can give you additional language for that.
That'd be great.
Okay.
And this is pretty standard with any infiltration, DMP proposed?
Correct. Yes. And they have all the pretreatment devices in the design and everything, too. So, it meets all the stormwater standards that DEP puts out.
Are there any comments or questions from members of the public, limited just to what Amory Engineers has worked on, while Mr. Brennan is here? There'll be other opportunities for questions, but just on these limited topics, because I know stormwater is important. We've had comments and questions from butters about drainage. So, any further questions now would be the time. Yes, sir? If you could just come up, so-
You've got to come up. So, the folks at home can hear.
Mark Nidki at Backriver. Just around the timing of the test pits, when that might occur.
So, what was requested was during the initial phases of construction, a minimum of two test pits shall be excavated at each proposed infiltration system to verify the soil. So, that's required because, you know, with a 12-acre site, they, you know, I've got a list of where they are, but they don't exactly match up with where all the infiltrations wound up. But Patrick said at least eight feet in some instances as-
Let me just tell you, so the question was on timing?
Yeah.
And so-
Initial phases of-
So, what does that mean, just so the public's clear on that?
Yeah, I would say it's, it would happen prior to construction, probably coincident, or maybe just before any demolition would happen. Some of the test pits are in areas that are currently occupied by the existing building in Hingham Mutual's operations out there. So, certainly after they were moved out, and it would be before we got, probably before we even completed demolishing the building. We would want to flush that out, no pun intended, as soon as possible.
Right. It's in everyone's interest, clearly. I mean, we, there's an expectation of what's going to be found. If it's not, you'll have plenty of time to make adjustments.
I suspect we would want to come back to you with a revised design and vet that. So, we would want to, in our interest, should you approve a project, we would want to do that soon.
I would just add that it's not a matter of seasonal high groundwater being, you know, during that time, because it's usually quite evident from the soils where that seasonal high groundwater elevation is. There's staining and other evidence of that. So, yeah. So, it's not really seasonally dependent.
I'd like to move on to transportation.
All right, excellent. Robert, can I ask? Scott, I'm going to grab the chair. Does that make sense?
I'll stand if I can bring the microphone.
Yep.
For the record, my name is Robert Nagy, and with Van Assen in Bresslin out of Watertown, Massachusetts. The last time we made a presentation here on transportation issues, issues were raised, comments were made by some board members and some members of the public about how the driveway design was going to be integrated into the Beale Street corridor. There were certainly some questions about the impacts of speed along the corridor, the amount of traffic that may end up cutting through the shopping center, if it was allowed to turn out left from the driveway, pedestrian accommodations, on-street parking, bicycle accommodations, a few other things. So, we spent the better part of the last month or so working with your consultant and Emily to try to develop a driveway design that was addressed as many of those issues, or if not all of those issues, in a way that we thought was in the character of the corridor, addressed some of the issues that were important to the development as well, to make sure it worked, and ultimately ended up coming up with a design that I've got here. I want to walk you through it just relatively quickly, and if, of course, if anybody has any questions, we're more than happy to address them. But the major components of the driveway design are a channelized right turn coming out of the driveway, so that cars are, cars and trucks that might end up leaving the site are all going to be directed to the right down Beale Street. Ultimately, if they're trying to get to Lincoln Street, they turn left at the Terry Drive, at the signal there, and head in that direction. The simple placement of the right turn only designation still had some questions about the ability for drivers to sneak around that. There's multiple different examples throughout, not only Hingham, but probably Massachusetts, where people, aggressive drivers, may end up trying to make a U-turn regardless. So, we've placed a median, six-foot median in the middle, just past the driveway here, to really dissuade any drivers from making that U-turn, that if they really wanted to get to the shopping center, it would take an extraordinary effort. To do so, we've provided a turning movement to show that a driver simply couldn't make a U-turn. He'd actually, or she'd actually have to stop, back up, do a three-point turn in the middle of Beale Street, which obviously is something we would, if they really were, heck, you know, they really wanted to do it, they probably, you know, it would require effort. The simplistic piece of that being, it may end up being simpler, and would end up being simpler for them to take a left, and then another left to get to Lincoln Street. The driveway design also considers the fact that we want to cross Beale Street from a pedestrian perspective. So, you can see here, we've designed, if the driveway's coming on out here, tapping into the sidewalk plan that's there today. We've got a pedestrian crosswalk and another pedestrian crosswalk.
Give me just one second.
Absolutely.
Emily, are these plans up on the zoning board's website?
Yeah.
So, I, because I know there are a number of members of the public who are concerned about this. If you need more detail, they are up on the zoning board website. You can blow them up and have a pretty close view of what's being proposed.
Yep. So, pedestrian crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk, in both locations, there's actually a pedestrian refuge in the island that would be created, that would be channelizing the right turn movement, as well as you've got a median that we talked about here to prohibit or minimize the amount of U-turns. But there's also a median on the opposite side of the driveway to protect those folks who are crossing Beale Street here. The corridor itself, we pointed out in the traffic studies and some of the data that we've provided, that, you know, vehicle speeds along Beale Street are traveling anywhere between five and 10 miles an hour over the speed limit that they should be out here. One of the, one of the countermeasures to speeding is to give a driver a sense of, you know, a little bit of squeeze, if you will, out here. So, today, you've essentially got about 38, 40 feet of pavement width out there that really, in a straight line, it really encourages drivers to go at the speed that they want to get to. Obviously, once you get past Terry Drive, the medians that exist down there tend to slow drivers down through that section. The same concept applies here. We've taken the 48, you know, the 40-foot cross-section, we've broken it up, we're putting some lane lines out there as well, to make sure that drivers have that 11- to 12-foot lane that they're driving in, which is much more traditional. We've, as you know, there's on-street parking that's being introduced in front of the athletic fields. That also serves to slow down and provide some activity out there that drivers would see and come to. So, while the speeding isn't necessarily an issue, we're still providing that sort of sense of comfort for a driver that would let them know that they're transitioning off of Lincoln Street, off of 3A, which is more of a certainly arterial roadway feel for it, down to a much more residential, athletic, recreational roadway, as you come to the site and continue to drive by it. I did mention that there's some bicycle accommodations that are being proposed, five-foot shoulders out here. So, if anybody did want to ride their bike down to, say, the Back Cove area, or do something to that extent, they're more than welcome to do that. The design of the driveway was somewhat influenced by the placement of the existing trees that exist out there. I know it was an architectural, landscape architectural desire to save those trees. They're nice, mature trees at the gateway to this, so provide some screening to the development. So, we ended up moving the driveway just a tad to make sure that those trees were protected. The sidewalk is designed to loop around those. And ultimately, I think this is, this is a design that we're very comfortable with. It addresses a lot of the issues that I think were raised here, limits certainly the speed, limits the impact to the Lincoln Center Shopping Plaza, and directs traffic to where it ultimately does want to go, which ultimately is either down to Lincoln Street or down Beale Street a little further there. The driveway's designed to accommodate truck turning movements into and out of it. I do want to make that point as well. Certainly, the site layout itself has been looked at and reviewed by your peer reviewer to make sure that truck access through there, delivery trucks, moving in trucks, et cetera, can do that. I know that Mr. Toccio also talked a little bit about the fire department. They've looked at some of the issues out here as well. I know that they're still providing a little bit more information, but from an emergency response and access perspective, a lot of, some of those questions have been addressed as well, and I know that that was something that was raised by your peer reviewer during the process. So, that's where we're at right now. I know Jeffrey Dirk from Van Assen Associates is here, and I know he's somebody that you may want to hear from as well. But all that information was provided to you in the letter, in the plans, as was noted earlier.
The median that you discussed, how tall is that?
Typically, it would be a, you'd have a six-inch, you know, reveal on the curbing that would be in the middle of the roadway. So, it's a six-foot wide median, curb-to-curb, you know, some light planting, you know, grassed area in the middle there, and you'll end up having a one-foot offset to that with a lane line. So, you're not, it's clear that there's the median, and here's the lane line. So, it's, ultimately, it's about eight feet when you think about, you know, lane line to lane line, six feet of physical. to lane line, six feet of physical, but the curb reveal is anywhere between four and six inches.
Four and six inches, it's not proposed to be a wall that some people in the administration might want to have to...
No, no.
Keep certain people in or out.
No.
We're not building a wall, it's a lower median.
We've created a path through the wall if that's what you're worried about.
This is a guarantee we have to pay for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Believe me.
Joe was suggesting that we have Waymouth pay for it, is that...
That's funny.
I won't touch that.
Okay.
They don't show this in Waymouth, right?
Okay.
My best friends are from Waymouth.
Mr. Dirk.
Leave me.
And just before you go on, I mean, the median is an important safety issue. I don't, you know, it's not something that I intend to make light of. It's something that, it's an important barrier, and it's, I know it's intended to address the safety concerns that have been raised. Go ahead.
So good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessen Associates. I think as Rob had mentioned, we worked with them on this design. We met at their office to kind of go through it and put out some trace paper and kind of sketch things up, because the prior design left something to be desired. So what you see here now is a plan that we think really accomplishes the goals that we had set out for the applicant to achieve, which was speed reduction, prohibiting left turns, exiting the property, and then to incorporate this pedestrian crossing in this area. And this design is presented, it achieves all of those in our mindset. In terms of looking at kind of the median, because I think some of the discussion was how long does this median really need to be?
Right.
And I think what you've seen is we had laid out for the applicant, and I know they were balancing this desire to maintain the vegetation that's along Beale Street at the front of the property, which we think is important as well, and we need to weigh that as well as trying to achieve the goals. And what you see in terms of the median and the east side of the driveway is that it extends past the point where kind of the point of curvature for that right turn movement transitions back into Beale Street. So what that does is, by the time a motorist has actually come across and made this right-hand turn, and they're at the point of that end of the median, they're already heading towards Terry Drive. And so that's what we're trying to achieve. So the channelization combined with the median achieves that desire of getting them down the road far enough that, hey, it doesn't make any sense to make a left turn here.
How does the median affect snow removal?
The median, actually, from the standpoint of plowing, it does allow for the snow to be put onto the median area there. The concern that you have, and I know this is some of the things that were raised by the applicant, as well as drainage, because it's not so much you can store the snow in that area there, but it happens, what happens when it melts, and then the icing that happens. And so as long as they're looking at drainage and things like that, which they will have to for the median, that would be taken care of as well. So we think it should be able to be addressed in terms of the plowing, and it wouldn't be any different than how they deal with the median down east of this area along Beale Street as well. The other important thing in the median, if you recall in some of our prior discussions, had to do with the speed, and this was acknowledged, the speeds in this area, they aren't excessive. If we're within a five mile an hour pace of the posted speed limit, that's good. That's what we'd like to see. But really, what we're looking at in terms of speed is that pedestrian crossing, and so we want to make sure that speeds are conducive to having a crossing here, but also the median provides some protection. It provides a refuge area for the pedestrians, because as mentioned, we have kind of two median segments, and the pedestrians are crossing between those two, so there is a refuge area in the middle that's about eight feet wide, as described for that pedestrian, to really make the crossing in two stages, so they can really get out into the center area there, they're protected, they can look for a gap in the other direction, and then fully complete the crossing. So we think it accomplishes that. And then the last thing, as you see, in terms of the turning maneuver that was shown, and I know it's hard for the audience to see, but there's a blow-up of a car trying to make a turn there. This really is not practical for anyone to make a U-turn. You're just not going to do it. You'd have to make a three-point turn, and it's really, it's not something someone's going to do, given the fact that the road has been narrowed and the fact that the medians there in place, from all practical purposes, you're not going to make a U-turn in this area here. So we think this design has accomplished all of those objectives. I think the only comment that we had on it, and it had nothing to do with the design, was just, I know there's a new set of site plans, we hadn't seen a set of site plans with this incorporated into it, and maybe that's a part of the March, I'm sorry, the January 25th plans that were submitted, but we were just waiting on seeing that. But this plan does address what we were, we had asked the applicant to do in this area.
Great.
Okay. Happy to answer any questions you have on this. I mean, there may be some other items that you want to go through, but we've, essentially the applicant with this drawing, and I think with the site plans being updated, there's nothing outstanding that we had relative to traffic. I think one of the other points that you had heard is about the fire department reviewing circulation.
Yep.
We had a comment about access to Building 1, and that is really something that the fire department just needed to sign off on, and I believe there's a memo in your packet that says that they're comfortable with respect to the onsite circulation.
Just one thing, I understand the design of the longer median. What's the design intent for the smaller median?
So the smaller median, it's a couple of things. Really, it's channelization for the vehicles. When you think about conditions, even just like this morning, when you have a little bit of snow that's on the road, it's not apparent to a driver that there's a median on the other side as you're, say, if you turn off of Route 3A and you're traveling down Beale Street. So having this little piece of median followed by the longer set of median, what it's doing is giving channelization to the driver, especially when you have winter-like conditions and there may be snow on the road. Having it raised up four to six inches, as they're talking about, you're really going to be able to see it under all conditions, and that way you won't slam head-on to the other side of the median. But the other part of it is the pedestrian protection. If we didn't have that other median nose on that side, it doesn't provide the pedestrian protection. We try to avoid what you see in some places, which is you will have a median, and then they cut a crosswalk through, and there's like a little nose of a median on the end, and the pedestrian's kind of walking on that. That's just really, it collects trash in the middle there, it also stores water, and that's another problem where it freezes. So we try to avoid having kind of a cut in a median for the pedestrian crosswalk, and so this also accomplishes that objective as well.
No signalization warranted here?
Not for the pedestrian crossing, it wouldn't meet the criteria for that. With adequate signing, which they will have pedestrian crossing warning signs, it should operate in a safe manner.
If you want to stay upfront, because we've got some questions on the subject, and this is really to the applicant, do we have a landscaping plan for the median?
The short answer is not yet, but we will. We're still looking at it. This was just recently resolved last week.
Okay, so, and that's something that you would review just to make sure it's not inconsistent with your expectations?
We would take a look at it. I would mention that, given the fact that the applicant has addressed our comments, we did submit to the board some suggested conditions of approval. Within those suggested conditions are specific conditions relating to maintenance of sightlines. So we would certainly review it, but there is a condition that would require that they be maintained, that nothing is planted in that area that would cause a site obstruction.
Do we have, do we know what's proposed for snow removal on the proposed sidewalk between the entrance and Lynch Fields?
We don't yet. That was a mentioned condition for the school department...
Yep.
...with respect to having the school bus drop-off.
Right.
And that's something that I'm going to follow up with Susan and with Emily. That was something that initially we were thinking, that's wonderful. We got a little bit of pushback from insurers, so we just need to clarify some questions on our ability to work within the right-of-way, but to the extent that, you know, we'll work it out. I understand that some other towns have done it, so it might just be a situation where, you know, we need to have that information shared and share that with the insurer.
But this is something, I'm assuming, that's necessary for the safe use of this as a bus stop?
Right, I mean, as long as the town, I mean, if the town says we won't plow a portion of the sidewalk, then somebody has to, so I assume that's going to be us.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have plans for construction of a sidewalk along the south side of Beale Street, west of the project entrance?
No, we don't. And Mr. Dirk had suggested that earlier. We took a look at it. What it does is, it would basically link what Bearcove Park, they're instituting it, another parking area down there, as you know, right now, folks use the parking area next to the Field House at the head of the Shelter Path, that's where people use it. What they're doing, I don't know if it's up and running, or if it's something that they want to do, but it's another parking area where people will come, drive in their cars, and visit. What we're doing is by having multiple links from our site to that parking area that's next to the Field House, so that's one thing we've done. We also have a direct link out to Shelter Path, and then also we're proposing to construct the boardwalk access to Bearcove Park, plus a conservation restriction on roughly three acres. Our thinking is that we cover any and all the anticipated movements to allow for people to go to the park, whether it's from our property, or to, you know, facilitate anything with respect to getting to the parking lot next to the Field House. We don't foresee anybody necessarily choosing to park down near the 99 and then wanting to walk out onto Beale Street to go to the other parking lot or to Shelter Path, et cetera. We just, we think that we're covering multiple fronts, all of the movements that we would, you know, be rationally related to our project. Again, it's three pieces plus the conservation restriction, so we would propose that that's a responsible way of meeting the obligations. Moreover, we've got some other things going on with Bearcove Park that enhance a lot of their access issues, which aren't before you folks here today. And then also the expenditure of the monies for the sidewalk, the parking spaces, everything that's in front of the park, basically the playing fields. That's where we chose pretty early on to concentrate the efforts for mitigation monies for that area. So that was made, you know, just consciously, knowing that that was part of a multiple approach back into the park. Is, at some point, that remote lot may be useful to people, say, perhaps coming over the bridge, et cetera, at some point, you know, and at that point, I don't know how it'll all play out, but we don't believe that that's really got the relationship from a mitigation standpoint, that all of these other things have. And I think we've taken it seriously, we stepped right up on all of those, and I think, you know, I think we've shown that we're taking it seriously. We're not looking to shirk what would be mitigation, that would be kind of reasonably linked, but I think that we've thought about it, that, you know, that's our position.
Jeff, what's your view on the sidewalk along the south side of Beale Street?
I mean, I don't disagree with the characterization by Terry Tachio in terms of relationship to the project. I think from my perspective, it's proven that I point out that this is, there's, from the town's infrastructure standpoint, this is a missing piece of sidewalk. It's just, and so...
And who would use the sidewalk?
Well, it would be anyone that is walking along Beale Street that isn't going to go into their project site, let's say, if they wanted to get up to either that parking area or get up to Route 3A. I mean, this provides a connection to get up to that portion of the town without going through the project. That's really what it serves in.
But let me just, so if someone is a resident of the project, they want to go have a meal at the 99...
Yes.
Would they use this sidewalk?
I would think, well, I would think they may cross at the crosswalk, and then they would be on the same side of the road of Beale, same side as Beale Street as at the 99 restaurant. From the standpoint of the project's residents, I see them using this crossing if they want to patronize any of the retail establishments of the restaurants on the north side of Beale Street. If they're looking to recreate, they would probably use the internal pathway network. We're looking at it from more of the standpoint of completing a portion of the town's infrastructure, and again, serving those people that may be walking along Beale Street that aren't inclined to go into the development to reach points along Route 3A, or, you know, if they wanted to get up to where the bridge area is for some reason. So there is that, I think it will be apparent that there's a missing piece of sidewalk. You'll be walking along Beale Street, and then you'll come to the driveway, and then there is a crosswalk to get you across the street, but there's nothing on the south side to carry you up to 3A, so there's a missing piece in the infrastructure for the town of sidewalk facilities.
So there's going to be a crosswalk to get me across the street to go to, like, the Stop &amp; Shop?
Correct.
But if I wanted to go to the 99, I'm going to have to walk through that busy driveway entrance area?
Correct, across, exactly.
Right, so I might be inclined to stay on the other side of the street to avoid that driveway entrance?
Correct, you may be, yes.
And that's when I would use your proposed sidewalk?
You would just sidewalk, and then you would cross Beale Street, right? Yep, exactly.
Right, and there's no...
Cross closer to where the cars come around that corner that we've talked about.
Okay. Okay.
And also, Michael points out, anyone coming from the east, any of the residential neighborhoods, they'll hit Shelter Path, everything first, to be able to, if they want to go down into that area of the park, they'd go there. The area that we're talking about is, you know, a cross back from the 99, and we see it as it's an alternative parking area now, not necessarily a pedestrian destination, maybe in, you know, 10 years, or, you know, that may evolve, but we just don't think it's there now, and then...
So you see it as an alternative parking?
Potentially. I think that's the way, I don't know it specifically, but I heard that...
Parking for what?
Bear Cove, the Bear Cove Park. That's how it's been described to me.
Yep.
And then what we're saying is that we've got all of that parking infrastructure right next to us, and we're embracing it, we're providing multiple connections to that, and that's existing, it's in significant use, and I think it's working really well.
Okay. What about the traffic signal at Beale Street, William B. Terry Drive? Do we need to do anything about the timing on that, or is that, is there a study on that? What's...
I believe that Jeffrey had the condition...
Yes, and that's actually a new item, and the applicant, I don't think we had discussed that previously, but what we've suggested is basically because of the fact that we're restricting the turning movements coming out of the site, so anyone who wants to make a turn, as was mentioned, to get out to Lincoln Street, they need to go down to the signal and make a left-hand turn.
Right.
So what we've suggested as a condition potentially would be that, once, within six months of the project achieving 80% occupancy, so that's essentially almost full, that at that point, they would go down and see how that traffic signal is operating, because there will be changes in traffic patterns, and there'll clearly be an increase in the left turn demands at the signal, to determine whether or not there would be some need to adjust the traffic signal timing. So we've suggested that within six months of 80% occupancy, they go out and study the intersection, see if there's a need for implementing changes to the signal timing, and that if there is a need, that they in fact go out and implement those changes.
Yeah, I mean, we heard that from members of the public, they were concerned, people going the other direction...
Right.
What, you know, what the lag would be, so what you're suggesting makes sense. Are you amenable to that?
Absolutely. We look back, so great.
The final issue I had on my list, evaluation of the Beale Street-Fattler Road-Tuckers Lane to make sure that that evaluation is done prior to the issuance of occupancy permits?
Yes.
That's agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Joe, or...
No, at this time, no.
Members of the public on transportation, any questions?
I have a question.
Please come up to the mic, if you don't mind. Guess we meant an obstacle course for you.
Margaret, on to Bed 47, Back River Road. Just a question about that left-hand turn. It's a designated left-hand turn?
To go down to Terry?
To go from, to come out of the driveway to the light, take a left.
Make that right, and then you make the left.
That's a designated turn?
So in other words, are there two lanes, and one is reserved for a left lane, or is it just one lane, people making the left?
As it is now.
It would stay as is.
So that's one lane, so it would not be a designated lane for a left turn only?
So the project, sorry, let me speak to the microphone. So the project itself will probably only generate about 40 left turns during a busy hour of the day at that intersection, which doesn't rise to the need for a full left-turn lane. But again, if, as we go through this process and we go out, we look at the timing, if there's a need to do something out there, like restriping, there's plenty of width to do that, if that's something that falls out of that.
So for folks who live in this devout, this new development, to get to, let's say, Stop &amp; Shop, they come out, they take a left, they cross over Beale, and...
They make the right out of the complex?
Well, they make the right out, yes.
Yeah.
And then, do they do a U-turn at that light?
No, you don't have to.
Do they go out to 3A?
They don't have to do that either. You can make a left, there's another entrance for the Stop &amp; Shop.
Near Rockland Bank.
Exactly.
Yeah, which is sort of an optical course in and of itself.
Right, there are actually two entrances.
There's two off of Terry Drive.
Right. Right. So they would not have to go on to 3A to get into that project.
And just out of curiosity, has anyone spoken with whoever owns that area to accommodate a whole bunch of traffic that's going to enter what I feel like is the backside of that building? I mean, if you've ever done it yourself, it's sort of wormholing your way around.
I have done it and I agree with your characterization. It's sort of an interesting way to get there. Yes, sir.
We have had discussions about this design and the traffic circulation patterns with the abutter, or the future owner, I should say.
And what was their, how did that discussion?
They also do not want cut-through traffic from the site, so.
Are they planning on doing something to modify the drive to avoid cut-through traffic?
Admittedly, I don't know. We did not discuss what their plans were.
Hi, Jerry Waters, 22 Back River. I'm just wondering, how much time will it take a car traveling at speed, making the right off 3A? How much time will there be before it crosses or encounters that crosswalk? So you make the right?
Yep.
Is it three seconds? Is it 10 seconds? How much time does a person have to cross before I see a car up there and I want to cross?
Right, so I'm at the crosswalk and I'm start to go, I don't see traffic and all of a sudden, there's a car.
Right, so what's the time interval between coming off 3A and that car crossing the crosswalk?
You'd be in the median area before the car, are you clear, line of sight down to 3A?
How much time? The grandmother with a stroller?
So you would be walking at about three and a half feet per second, so you're crossing over to the median area, which is about how wide?
The crossing distance is probably, it would be probably around 15 to 17 feet of walking.
So what we're required to design for is the elderly woman that may be crossing or a young child, so that's about three and a half feet per second. So they're going to be in that median area before the car even comes down. If you saw, if you started walking, when you saw the car make the turn coming up, you'd be in the median area standing there before that car encountered you. And I think that's, but to your point, I think that's the, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I think that's the reason why it's important that the median's there, so you can make it in the two stages, so you don't need to run across the road.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to make sure that there's enough time to actually for slow people to get across.
Yes.
And you're saying that that's certain there is?
Yes.
That's one of the design standards for this, right. Yes, sir.
Dave Bale, 19 Back River Road. It doesn't appear that you can make a left-hand turn out of the shopping plaza. Isn't that median in the way?
I'm sorry, a left, so if I'm at the Stop and Shop Plaza and I want to make a left?
Yeah.
To go, to go east, coming out.
Again, I'm sorry, I can't reach the microphone from here, but...
You know what, we can bring it to you.
Yeah. It's a good question. The shopping plaza driveway is just, I guess it would be west of the median here, so not unlike this driveway here, it's offset by probably around 50 feet or so. So you could make a left turn out around the median. There'll be signage within the median to make sure that people are staying to the right of it, making sure they're doing all the right movements. But you could definitely come out of the driveway and continue down Beale Street with no issue.
So just so I'm clear, if I'm pulling out of the Stop and Shop driveway, if I went perfectly straight, would I hit the median?
No.
No.
The median's over here.
Right.
The driveway's here. You'd run into the...
Line is just a lane.
That's just lane, yeah, that's just path.
Exactly, okay. That was the...
Yeah. We want to make sure that drivers who are driving down Beale Street are funneled to the right of the median there.
And that's the melting ice cream question, I guess.
That's a good question. Yes, ma'am?
That's a great question.
Hi, Mary Jenkins, 9 Hearn Way. I have a question for you guys. Have any of you ever driven carpool to that, those ballfields there? I spent eight years at those fields, five for baseball, three for football. Here's how it works. I can't remember the exact numbers, but one of the guys, Tom Hoffman, came and talked about between 500 and 700 kids on a Saturday playing softball at those fields. From nine to 11, Hingham Lumber plays best Chevy. And from 11 to 1, Gilbert Trash plays, you know, somebody else. It's on and on all day long. Sidewalks, medians, stop signs, those are so cool. Does anybody have a 10-year-old son who ever uses one? Have you ever tried to cross that street with between one and four little boys trying to hold on to your hands? Honestly, in the good old days, there wasn't a potty there and we didn't have lanes and designations and a real parking lot. Everybody parked on one side of the road. Now people are parked in the whole parking lot, some are parked illegally in our development and others are parked on the other side of the road. So anytime during the day when you're trying to drive through that road, you're like watching to see little kids darting out between cars because they've forgotten something that's on the other side of the road. Same thing with football practice. Every single Monday through Friday, every night, 6 o'clock, football practice, on and on and on. So you're talking about adults crossing streets and I'm talking about kids crossing streets. I know development is a part of progress, like you can't stop it. But we really do have to think about these kids crossing these streets and the impact of the number of cars on the road. We're talking about 220 apartments, is that right? Is that 440 cars? No, so how many cars is that? 300 cars? What's your number?
330?
So 330 cars and what's your average of how many trips a day a person makes? Two, three?
It's much more, it's...
So say it's...
They run down...
Say it's six, say it's 330 cars doing two trips a day. More traffic means more opportunity for accidents. And you're talking about directing, carefully directing the traffic right by those fields, aren't you?
Yes.
Don't they go right by those fields?
Correct.
I know you can't send it any other way, but let's think about the impact of having more cars on the road. Numbers don't lie. More cars mean more opportunities for accidents. Just think about it, okay? Thank you.
Jeff, what was your assessment of the field use and traffic there?
Well, I think when there are activities going on at the field, you know, she's 100% correct, we know that there's congestion that happens down there and certainly children or anyone walking out between cars is not a desirable situation. I think the applicant, by providing sidewalks and designated parking, to some extent is trying to regulate what's going on down there as well. I do think that there are some field use management in terms of scheduling that could be implemented in this area. Maybe that's something that the town looks at so we don't have overlapping events and things are more spread out to try to disperse those traffic patterns. I think from the standpoint of trying to make it as safe as possible, I think that what the applicant is doing in this area, at least with the median, by providing the on-street parking, by providing the pavement markings and trying to create, as Mr. Nagy has mentioned, kind of this pinching down of the roadway, we're trying to slow the traffic down through this area. Certainly, when the development is built and these improvements are in place, it is going to be a different environment from the motorist's standpoint, from what they experience today, which is a long straightaway and, you know, the potential for higher speeds. This is going to create a different look to it and what we're hoping is that it creates that pattern of saying, slow down, the road's narrow, there's activity happening in this area, there's going to be the signs about the crossing happening, all of these things aren't there, that these will provide a message to motorists to slow down through this area here. But I do think, you know, we do want to have more education about trying not to have people crossing between cars. It's not an area where we want people crossing the street between parked cars. So I think, I mean, that's something that could happen anywhere, but I think that, you know, this is a design that will help to slow the traffic down in the area there and maybe there is something from the town's perspective in terms of scheduling to try to reduce some of the intensity of the activity that happens all at once in that area that maybe should be considered as well.
Jeff, you were going to, Jeff?
Yes.
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just I think that's...
So you said no, but you meant yes?
As I'm thinking, everything Jeffrey said, I was going to say, and then I'd add to that, we're talking sign boards, we were talking about using those as this is, it's new, it's rolled out to get people to understand that there's now more here, there's something here. What the condition is now, if you just look at the condition, it's 40 feet of pavement, industrial kind of zone now and then office park. So what is going to happen is the introduction of all of this is going to pinch everything down. And then when there are cars, when people are coming home from work, they're, you know, coming off of 3A, they're going to understand, people live here now, there's more activity and it's really going to change what you see when you're out there. So instead of, you know, almost like a, it is now, I mean, it's a remnant. The reason that's so wide is, I mean, this was a piece of Hingham's industrial work zone and that's why it's so big. By pinching things down and introducing all of this stuff, people are going to get the, you know, they're going to get the message pretty quickly. And again, we, in speaking with a lot of the public safety departments, we talked about those sign boards, you know, being able to use those. So education's part of it and, you know, we're committed to being part of that too. So we get it, but what's going to happen is instead of, boom, I'm coming home from work, oh no, here's a field, I better slow down, you're going to start to have them see things first and that's going to change the thinking. That's the design, that's the science behind it.
So, but the concern, one of the concerns I heard was not the people coming home, it's the people who are residing in this development leaving. And we're not talking about the basically rush hour coming home, we're talking about Saturday mornings.
Yep.
And how will the residential vehicles that are leaving and entering this complex affect safety for the kids who are playing?
Yeah, and they're going, well, I didn't, I almost went into the numbers and I think that's where Joe was going to go, that it's not just a linear, just the numbers, you've got peak hours, different distributions. We've got a TDM plan in place, Mr. Dirk talked about requirements with respect to that. So there's going to be an overall education of people. This isn't just going to be a transient place where people visit and then, you know, they're not going to come back for a couple of months. People are going to live here, this is, this is going to be their home. So they, just like you say, oh, on Saturdays, does anyone carpool the kids? The people who live here are going to say the same thing. They're going to, you know, they're going to be your neighbors and they're going to say, I leave between, you know, whatever period or Saturday mornings, they've got games and as far as scheduling with the town, et cetera. It'll happen, that place has been evolving since they basically rebuilt it. But people are going to be residents and they're committed to the situation where they educate the people. They're going to have a center that talks about things like traffic, transportation, availability, boat schedules, things of that nature. So that's on them because the other piece of the equation is, from an operator's standpoint, they don't want to build something, invite all these people in to live there and then they're feeling uneasy or that it's not working. So the burden's on them too.
I just ask, only be, I don't know what the science is, but Robert, I mean, I think the question more narrowly was about the speed of the cars leaving in that neck-down area. I mean, there'll be, there'll be a stop sign at the entry drive. Could you just describe the distance and how quickly cars could get to, even get to the speed limit?
Yeah, no, so through the area that we're talking about here, it's only about 500, 600 feet between the driveway and Terry Drive itself. So as cars are stopped and then pulling out of the driveway there, it's really not an opportunity for them to get up to a high rate of speed, certainly there. One of the things the applicant is doing, as we know, is putting a sidewalk along that stretch of road, which doesn't necessarily exist today. I know that parents are parking their cars along the edge of the road, letting kids out right there into the grass swaled area and they kind of find their way through the gate and to the football fields and baseball fields. You know, give some credit here, there's a sidewalk that's going to be created along the frontage of the roadway so that when parents do drop off their kids, they're not dropping them off into a, into that muddy area where they may end up walking in the roadway. They're dropping them off at a, you know, on a paved sidewalk, which is much more, you know, clear and directional. They're giving people an opportunity to cross a street and admittedly, if there's, you know, younger kids who are, you know, running around out there, shaming the parents for letting them do that in a, you know, in a down, not, as Mr. Tachi described it, kind of an industrial-looking area. But at the same point in time, you know, you've got sidewalks, you've got on-street parking that's now designated out there that doesn't exist today. It's free-for-all in certain cases out there. We've all seen it. I've been out there and brought my kids down to play baseball down here and it is what it is. It's the nature of the beast. They're doing their part, I think, to address the safety issues here. To Michael's point, the cars are not going to be getting up to a speed that's dangerous. It's, you know, we're talking 30 miles an hour, you know, at most out here. I can't imagine cars are going to go any faster than that, which is typical for a residential street in any part of Massachusetts. That's what you would typically sign something for, have, you know, closely spaced homes and so that's what we're talking about here. The transition from what is out there today to tomorrow will be, you know, we're looking at, you know, order of magnitude, bringing car speeds down about four or five miles an hour with this design. And I think that's really what the goal is out here for this. So I don't want to, I don't want to beat that, but I think everybody else has brought up excellent points as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the back.
Hi, Martha Harvey, 31 Back River.
You could speak up so everyone can hear you.
Sorry. I have a new puppy, so I'm standing out in my front yard morning, noon and night. And what I'm shocked about in our 40 unit or whatever it is, development, it's not the residents going in and out, it's Amazon, FedEx, somebody is getting their windshield replaced, carpeting, dry cleaning. I'm serious, the commercial traffic in and out is shocking. And in 220 units, I think it's going to be big. And I just wondered if that is in the study.
That's a great question. We can ask Mr. Dirk about that.
Those numbers, actually, they're built into the numbers in the study. And I always can describe it the way that they arrive at the numbers is they actually go out and count a complex similar to yours and that's how they derive these numbers. So it includes all of that. The one thing that you do have with this type of community is that rather than, I think they have a central office. And one of the things with the TDM program, it's such a, seems like such a minor detail is you want to make sure that instead of the trucks coming in and out of there, because there's several hundred residents living here, that they come and they deliver to a central office, just like they would do at an office building. And then the packages are dispersed, so it cuts down in the amount of trips. And that's very important. Again, it seems like a minor detail to have a central mail area, a central drop-off area, but that is important in reducing the amount of truck trips.
Jeff, what, could you explain TDM?
So TDM is, it's an acronym for Transportation Demand Management and the purpose of it is to, it is to implement measures to reduce the volume of traffic and the amount of parking that's required for a project. And those measures are traditionally what you would think of in trying to encourage people to use public transportation to walk or bicycle. But I think the most important piece of it is always to provide information to the residents. And so what you'll see is a list of items that are all geared towards doing that. And the Commonwealth through the MassRides program, which you can look up on the website, that program is actually, it provides information to residents or to property owners on ways that they can reduce the amount of traffic demands from their project. And a lot of that is carpool linking. So if you're interested in joining a carpool, you can go onto the MassRides website and enter your information in terms of where you live, where you work and what your times of travel are, and they will actually pair you up with someone who may be going in the same area. So there's a lot of these incremental measures that are taken just to reduce the amount of traffic from the project. And the applicant, we've laid out kind of a list of measures and they've agreed to implement those to, again, cut down on the amount of traffic at the site.
So we should hope for Amazon delivering via those drones that will drop off the...
That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Bruce Mullin from 39 Back River Road.
Hi.
Just picking up on the comment that was made just now about the possibility of pedestrian lights at that, traffic lights at that pedestrian crossing. And it was sort of, I think concluded that it wasn't necessary at this stage. Is that just a, could that even ever happen? Because you've got traffic coming off 3A. If you ever stop that traffic coming off 3A with a pedestrian light, you're then going to get cars stranded on 3A and then we've got a real problem. I mean, is it, is that even feasible to have pedestrian lights at that crosswalk?
That's a great question. Let me, let's ask the expert here.
The answer's no, based on the volume of pedestrian activity at this location and what you had mentioned. One of the things that comes into, that we look at for criteria is there has to be a certain number of pedestrian crossings per hour and you'd never achieve it here. Basically, you could only achieve that in downtown Boston. The other piece of it is engineering judgment and that's where it comes into play, which The other piece of it is engineering judgment, and that's where it comes into play, which you had mentioned, which is that, what would be the ramifications if you stopped traffic, and would it create a safety issue? But given the distance of the crossing and the speed of the traffic on the roadway, there would be no need, it wouldn't meet the criteria, but there'd also be no need to provide a crossing, a signalized crossing.
Okay, because I think Jerry Ward has asked that question earlier, it's going to be interesting to see, because I'm, I'm on Beale Street every single day, and the speed of that traffic on both directions on Beale Street, cars come off 3A at a very high rate of speed. So I'm going to, I'm going to test that myself and see how many seconds it takes, and see if, make sure the grandmother can get to the, the protection, the little halfway point, you know, it's going to be like that frog game where you're stopping and you, and you go or stop.
Right, but when you test it, you need to make sure that you're testing it on roads that have been narrowed, not the roads that they exist today.
Correct.
Right.
Don't wait until the medians.
Don't use real grandmothers.
No, we're an artificial grandmother. Just the, another, another point on the, on the narrowing the traffic down on Beale Street.
Yep.
With all due respect, I think the narrowing, and even when we got the medians on the others, the east side, you know, towards Fattler Street.
Yep.
It does not slow the traffic down on Beale Street. The only thing that really seemed to work ever before were the speed bumps, which were, they were serious speed bumps, that really did slow the traffic down, but I think they did so much damage, they eventually had to remove them. But with all due respect, those, the existing medians on the other side of Beale Street do not slow traffic down on Beale Street.
Okay, but let me, let me stop, that's a quantitative question we should ask, if in fact, what are, what are the facts on that? Do we, do we know if those have slowed them down, or?
Based on, based on the measurements that the applicant has taken, the speeds have come down. We were measuring speeds prior, I know before those medians went in, because we did this study, those speeds were upwards of 40 miles an hour. And I think what we typically find is what Mr. Nagy mentioned, is that when you do any of these measures, you get about a five mile an hour reduction in what you measure for the 85th percentile speed. And that's generally what we're finding in this quarter. If you look at the measurements they had done over an extended period, the speeds are on the order of about 35 miles an hour, which is what we would want to have on a roadway of this type. So the introduction of those medians has dropped the speed somewhat, to be more in line with the posted speed limit.
Are there circumstances you can envision when the town should look again at having speed bumps or something similar?
Given the, this road really, it's classified, it's classified as a collector roadway, and you wouldn't put those in, there's just not something that you'd want to do on this type of a roadway. And the reason is, what you had found with, when you did put them in, is that, especially from the standpoint of it now becoming more residential, it creates a lot of noise. We've had instances where towns have installed them on similar type of roads, and we've gone back and done studies, and they've been removed just for that reason, because you end up with a lot of complaints about noise, as well as the fact that they're difficult to maintain, because vehicles are always, you know, ripping them up, bottoming them out, because they're not really designed for the volume of traffic that would be on this type of a roadway.
Thank you.
Another question regarding the school bus, from what I understand, the, the school, the, the school bus drop-off is going to stay in the baseball field parking area? How does that school, at the moment, there is no, that school bus is just coming down that road with the existing traffic, and it's, it's coming from Hingham Center, and it's making a left turn after the, that intersection with Terry Drive, and it's taking a left into a tiny little turning where the other cars come in from the other side to park at the baseball field. How does that school bus, what is there, what precautions are in place to make sure that, that it's safe for that school bus to turn? Because there's no traffic lights, there's going to be nothing to stop. How, I'd like to know what safety things are in that will enable that school bus to turn safely into that parking area.
That's a great, Jeff, did you?
Yeah, it's, we talked about that, it's, there's no change in the, the existing configuration, that, that's all sized, so that that narrow, it does look narrow when you come in, but that's been sized, and Mr. Cunningham said that, that, that works, that's, that's what they like. They like the way that it allows the bus to come in, turn around, and then set itself up so that the students can get in on it. Apparently, the place is big enough for parents, for example, on cold, cold mornings. A lot of parents like to park, go ahead.
What about making that left?
That left turn.
So making the left turn, and there will now be increased traffic?
That's exactly my point.
Right.
So you've got hundreds of more cars coming down that road.
Not all at once.
Not at once.
Yeah, so just, just to be clear, and again, made this, made this presentation at the first, the first hearing, we're really only talking in the order of magnitude of maybe 30 or 40 new cars during the morning rush hour that would be coming down Beale Street in that specific direction, during the peak hour, during that busy hour of the, of the morning. So that, you know, when you think about that from a, from a numbers perspective, it's one car every two minutes that you're going to be adding to the, to the corridor, maybe, you know, one and a half minutes, which isn't ultimately going to be creating that problem. And you've also got the signal there, you've got the signal at Terry Drive that will, you know, help pro, help advance that, that, that movement through the intersection.
This turn, Mike, this is before or after Terry Drive? As I'm heading towards 3A, it's, it's...
Often.
It's after Terry Drive, so...
Yeah, it's kind of...
I don't understand how the signal will be helping that.
No, no, no.
Oh, is it at Terry Drive?
No, it's after.
Right, it's kind of after.
You go through the intersection and then you turn.
Right.
It's not at Terry Drive.
Well, if you look, it's kind of lined up opposite the southbound approach to the intersection from Terry Drive.
So the basic question is, does that signal, will the, does the school bus cross at that signal, or is it past the signal?
It's past the signal.
Well, yeah.
I, I...
Sorry, I mean, I, I see it every morning.
It's at, it's at the intersection, it's still under the influence of the green-red lights. So it would be controlled in that regard, you're not going to have oncoming traffic when, when the bus is making its movement, that it would not be unexpected in that type of a situation, if that makes sense?
Say that again, because I'm not sure I follow.
So you're, you're still going to have Beale Street going eastbound, westbound, if we want to call it eastbound, westbound, and, and Terry Drive would be stopped at, at that signal during that period of movement, and then the bus would be able to make that movement into, you know, as it does today, into, into the parking lot there, and it's, as, as Mr. Tachio said, it's, it's designed for that movement, so there's not going to be any change to how it's accessing that. It's happening at the intersection, it's not signalized, because it's, it's an entry only, it's not an exit.
Right.
So, you know, from that perspective, there doesn't need to be a signal on that approach. So it's just simply making the turn at the intersection with, with the benefit of the safety of the intersection, you know, controlling, the signal controlling movements through it.
So, one second, excuse me, excuse me, please wait until you're recognized. The, the question, as I understood it, is if the signal, if the, making the left was before the signal, then the red light would actually stop oncoming traffic, and the bus could turn. So now we have the inner, the turn being after the signal, and...
Still controlled by the signal.
No, no, we're not, we're not changing the driveway access, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're not changing the driveway access from where it is today, it's still within the signal. So if there's a red light there, cars will not be influencing the bus's ability to make that turn into, into that driveway, any more than it does today.
But what, what the issue is, is now you're going to have a lot of increased traffic coming, going the other way, and the bus is going to be turning left in the face of incoming traffic.
And that traffic would not be stopped by the intersection, by the light, in fact, it would be told to go.
Correct. And that's, that's... And the bus driver would need to wait for the gap in the traffic to make that movement into, into that driveway, as bus drivers, as a driver who wanted to go, and they would. And my point simply being is the added 30 or 40 cars that would be, you know, made on that movement isn't enough to create a situation where it's going to become untenable for that driver. He's, he's got to wait for the cars, the queue of traffic to move through, he or she, and then they, they simply make the turn.
I'd actually just like to, just make a point, you know, when I've, I've attended most of these meetings, the, from my understanding, that original traffic study was, this latest, where it's almost impossible for the cars to turn left coming out of this, out of these premises and cuts, use the cut through, through the shops. At one stage, I think there was an estimate that a certain percentage may go through there, or may be turning left to go, to take 3A south.
Right, so everyone's now making the right, and then...
So now, now, everybody's making the right. The other thing which I saw in the, in the papers is that there was something that the, the number of required spaces on this development should be at the ratio of two to one per apartment, so it should have 440 spaces, they're requesting a waiver for 340 spaces. Does, it sounds like factually, there will be 440 cars, I don't know where the other 100 cars will park, but if you have two cars per apartment, A, where do those other cars park? Do they park on the baseball field parking? And should the traffic study not be based on 440 cars in that development, rather than the 330 that it was originally based on, if it's required to have 440 parking spaces?
Got it. So, does someone from the applicant want to respond? Or Jeff, do you?
Comfortable with the number, with that number?
So the traffic study, the traffic study's not based on the number of parking spaces, it's based on the number of units. So it doesn't matter how many parking spaces they build, you would never want the traffic study based on the number of parking spaces, because if they build only 100 parking spaces, then they would be abnormally low. So it's based on the number of units, and the methodology is, as I had described to one of the other commentators in terms of how they do it, and it, it follows standard practice. So if we know the number of units, we can estimate the amount of traffic. The parking, the town has a requirement, absent being granted a waiver, that for residential development, you need two spaces per unit. I will say to you that in apartment complexes, we don't see that parking ratio anymore. The parking ratios are more around the 1.5 ratio, and that's based on actual demands. We're getting away from the two spaces per unit, especially for multi-use developments, because it ends up with building too much parking. And I think with the mix of unit types that they have here, you don't end up with two cars per unit, for each and every unit. And so what they've found is that for residential apartment communities, absent being at a train station, that somewhere around 1.5 is a reasonable parking ratio that will meet the demands of the residents, as well as provide for visitor parking. So this is, actually, 1.5 is pretty standard nowadays.
But the, the second part to your question was, suppose it turns out that there's more, more cars, where would they park?
I, I think, well, I think the reality is that, in our experience, they're not going to have, that 1.5 is more than sufficient to accommodate the parking demands of the project. I don't know if they have overflow parking, but I would suggest to you that two spaces per unit is way too much parking for the project.
Okay, I, I understand that that is, you know, that is the professional...
I guess there's also the question, I'm sorry, if, for the applicant, is whether or not the owner of the apartment complex, how they regulate parking, how much parking, parking spaces per unit they permit, that's also something they can control, because having lived in apartments, sometimes you're only entitled to one space, or whatever it is. So I guess that's another question that I would add to the equation.
Sure, so there's a handful of items here that are probably worth talking about. One is, as far as the business goes, when people, what makes you an attractive place for residents to live, they expect to be able to park their car.
Exactly.
So it would, we actually run a lot of studies on this, this is something as, particularly as our demographics are changing, we focus on quite a bit. Not, there, there is zero incentive for a luxury apartment developer to build fewer spaces than you might need. So the first story is, is we, we do not want to build fewer spaces. In fact, we think we've added substantial extra spaces based on our own studies. Suburban, non-transit served communities, we have, we've polled, I think about nine or 10 active current communities, including Needham and other very similar high-quality communities like, such as Hingham. And those communities tend to use roughly 1.3 spaces on a demand basis. So we, we hedged our bets here by adding substantial cushion. I agree with Mr. Dirk, and of course, we studied this with our own special, specialists to make sure that we didn't hurt ourselves. We don't, we don't want to be in a point where someone says, well, I needn't, you don't have parking for my space, for my car. So it's, it's a very important part of our business, because people have, people expect to have a, a space for their automobile when they arrive, and it would be a dramatic problem for our, our operation if we didn't have enough. So we actually added substantially extra spaces here, part of it because we think maybe this site isn't exactly the average, so, but we think we have extra parking far in excess of, of what our data, national, local, my own experience, and what our specialists are advising. The second is our operating, our operating arm, our management company also keeps track of every resident and their car, we have license plate tracking surveys, we, particularly in the garages, we reserve spaces so that you actually have a, a space where you have to go. It's an important part of our entire operation. So, so to answer your question, we, there's no incentive for us to cheat on parking, it's just the opposite, that's why we added some substantial cushion.
So...
Our management company will be managing that closely, it's, it's a part of the, the business.
So on Super Bowl Sunday, will there be adequate parking? And if not, where will they park?
There will be adequate parking, and we would be willing to discuss with you a way to have some kind of, I'm so confident in, in our parking program here, that if you wanted to have some kind of condition, that we put a lease restriction on that, I'd be happy to, I'm, I feel very comfortable with the parking ratio and no overflow, it's, it's something we spend a lot of time...
You'll send the excess over to Bill Belichick's complex, and they can, they can park there.
I mean, that would be, that would be some assurance if there was some kind of restriction on the rental agreement as to, because I'm just speaking, you know, from, from Beale's Cove, Back River, you know, there is, nobody has got less than two cars in our, in our apartment block, and most of them are just, there's, there's just two people living in the, in the apartments, and they've each got a car. So I understand what the experts are saying, I just, personally, just, I, I, I just, I don't, I don't find, I just don't think that's how it's going to turn, I don't think there's going to be, going to be more traffic.
How, how does Back River handle excess parking demand, do you know?
We actually, we, we just park on the, on the, everybody parks on one side of a, of the roadway, it's a private roadway, and they either park in somebody else's driveway, some people we arrange to share driveways, but it's actually, it's an issue. It's a, it's an issue in the, in the, in the development in the moment. Sometimes people may, you know, park on the, on the road as we come into Back River, which again, causes a bit of a traffic, a traffic issue. This is, we're just acutely aware of, with a shortage, with no parking spaces, trouble, you get trouble with, because then you've got cars parking in the wrong place, you get, you, you can't drive into the complex, because cars are parked on the side of the road, and then cars can't drive in at a safe speed, or even exit the, the area safely. That may not be the case with this development.
Yeah, but what, what I'm hearing is that your interests and the applicant's interests are really aligned, because they want to be able to get people in there, and if there's a parking problem, they, they've got a real marketing problem.
Definitely.
I, I hear you.
I still, you know, it, just, all I'm saying is, a lot of things have changed from the original thing, and I still, my personal belief is that there, there is going to be more traffic. I just cannot believe there will only be 30 to 40 cars in that peak hour traffic between sort of 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning. I cannot believe there will only be 40 cars coming out of that premise, those premises, and turning right. I just, I find it very hard to believe that that, that actually may happen in that individual area. Just one last question on the proposed, what you talked about, you may do a signal change at Terry to allow those cars to actually turn left, from coming down Beale Street, to allow them to turn left onto Terry Drive. Tested by before, I've measured the distance, all you need is 12 cars stopped at that light, and traffic cannot exit out of Back River, out of Back River Road. So you're going to have people starting to come out Back River Road, the traffic's going to stop, and then they're going to be stranded in the middle of, of Beale Street with cars coming down at 35 or more miles per hour coming down there. So the, if, if, if the intent is to lengthen that, to change that traffic signal to allow cars to turn left there, that is going to cause congestion on Beale Street, and that will then impact people turning from Beale Street, coming out of either Beale's Cove or Back River, for us to turn left onto Beale Street, that's going to cause an issue.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you, did you want to comment on that last point?
I think it's a very valid point, that's taken into account, that is taken to, into account with the signal re-timing, the queuing, and what you want to do is not back up traffic to block intersections. I will say that that, that intersection has a lot of excess capacity to it, to allow for some adjustments of the timing without causing any of these, these problems. That signal is operating very efficiently, and so all we want to make sure of is, if there's some changes in the traffic patterns, we want to make sure the signal's updated, but it will take into account blockages.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, well, I'm Harry Daniels, and I want to thank you for turning up the heat. So I could take my vest off. I was going to say, it's because darker colors absorb more heat, but I won't say that.
I can't take credit, it must be Emily who arranged for that.
And I'm kidding. I have, I have a couple of questions, if I may. I have a couple of questions, if I may. One is, I have a concern--
Where are you going? Did you say where you reside?
I reside in, at 10 Heron Way in Back River.
Great.
I have a concern about a lot of what I've heard tonight, in the following respect. We've heard about standards, we've heard about optimums, we've heard about studies and the like, and all of this relates to optimum, I think optimum conditions, by advocates in favor of the applicant.
Let me just stop you there. So what I heard was, conditions that had parameters, plus or minus, did not assume optimum conditions, and were done by peer review, on behalf of the town, who is not advocating for the project.
All right. Well, in that sense, if that's true, then I stand corrected, and I appreciate that clarification. The problem I have is that, to the extent those parameters, or those studies, end up being wrong, the reality ends up resting with those of us who live here. And in particular, those of us who live in Back River, who are butters. We've heard about the fact that the traffic light has lots of capacity. I live in Back River, and on occasion, I'm trying to get out of Back River Drive between 8:00 and 9:00 in the morning. I don't see the excess capacity, with all due respect. So I'm wondering what I'm missing, as somebody who lives in Back River, and who has not seen all of this capacity, that I guess the studies show. Once this project is done, it's going to be too late for me and my neighbors, and I dare say for the town, to do anything about that. So I have concern about that. The other concern I have is, and it's a question, I'm not sure I understand how the median is going to prevent people coming out of the Alliance project from turning left into the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, on the one hand, and at the same time, permit me to come out of the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot and turn--
Left.
--left on to Beale, so I can get to my home. And if it does, then when I'm coming home from Boston, and I want to turn into the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, as I can now, to pick up what my wife wants me to pick up to bring home from dinner, I can't do that. I've got to go down to the traffic light, and if I'm understanding correctly, maybe I'm not.
We can end, yeah.
Well, here, I'll let you finish, because I want to make sure your concerns are--
If the median is going to prevent people coming out of Alliance from turning into the Stop &amp; Shop, then isn't it also going to prevent me from turning into the Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, when I exit off of Lincoln Street on to Beale Street?
Right, okay. Got it.
So in that respect, my quality of life, although I hate shopping, my quality of life has been affected adversely.
But that's not the case, though.
It's not the case.
No.
If I may, Mr. Daniels, so right now, the only movement that will be restricted is any resident, or any person visiting the Alliance site. The only movement that's restricted is a left turn out of that driveway. So just, and we could have, Mr. Nagy, relook at it, but if you were coming down 3A from Boston, you can still take a left in to the Stop &amp; Shop. The island does not block that. If you were leaving Stop &amp; Shop, and you wanted to take a left on to Beale Street, back towards Back River Townhomes, that movement is still the same, and allowed. The only restricted, new restricted movement, is for people leaving the proposed driveway that would otherwise, would may want to take a left, they're no longer allowed, they're physically--
So the median is going to be between, for drivers coming out of Alliance--
Right.
--and, and traffic that's exiting Lincoln Street on to--
That's right.
--on to Beale Street.
Yes.
You can actually see the driveway here from Stop &amp; Shop, so you could still very easily make this turn and proceed towards Back River Townhomes. If you were coming from Back River Townhomes, you would proceed just as you would today, and take a right into there?
Yeah, this is Mr. Beale's question.
So the traffic, then, I'm just trying to understand this. The traffic, then, that's coming out of your project, is going to be merging with traffic that's exiting from Lincoln on to Beale Street?
From--
Right?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
It's a stop sign, and they would be looking on their left shoulder to--
And to the extent they're turning left at Terry--
Yes.
They're going to be merging, and then turning left.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it's only going to be one line, so if they're turning left, and I want to go straight to get into--
And have to wait until they make the left.
I've got to wait.
You got it.
You've got to slow down.
No, no, I've got to wait.
That's correct.
And--
That's correct.
And I trust the experts, that it's only 30 to 40 cars an hour, but I don't believe it. And I just wonder about the impact of this on my quality of life, and the quality of life of my neighbors in Back River, who are going to have, who are going to feel the impact of this, in terms of the traffic, and in terms of the inconvenience it's going to cause. Thank you.
And I'm glad you raised it, because, I mean, the traffic issue is central to our analysis, and we want to make sure we get that right, because I see the issues that you're raising, and that's why we've engaged someone to do a review. We're not simply relying on what the applicant provides, and it's the goal of this board to get it right. So you've hit, you've, in my view, this is critical issue, and that we're going to spend as much time as we need to, to make sure we get it right.
I much appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, because, as I say, if you're wrong, if you're wrong, we are the ones, we in Back River primarily, are the ones who are going to suffer the consequences. So I trust you will, you will be extra vigilant, and pay as much diligence and attention as possible to this, to make sure that, as humanly possible, we get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this before? I know there's more, but did you have any other responses on that, or, I think we're--
I have two--
One second. No, we've got someone else? Yes?
Thank you, Harry. That's exactly how I feel. I picture myself waiting to get home, waiting for multiple cars to take a left at that light. That is very much going to affect us. There's another part that I would love for you to consider, along with what Harry mentioned, is all the folks that are coming out of Stop &amp; Shop, taking a left on to that street that you're, we're not allowed to drive, we're not allowed to use as a shortcut. How many times have we been in there, and you can't move? The traffic is stopped, from people coming out of yoga, people coming out of the grocery store, people trying to get to the 99. It's already a jam. So I just want you to also consider that part of the equation. It's not just what Harry mentioned, although that is huge. It's also right in the actual parking lot slash, you know, illegal cut-through. That's already bad enough.
Yes, sir. And then there was a woman behind you.
Yeah, I want Jerry Waters, 22 Back River. I just want to return to this idea of kids running around the area on Saturday, during sports games. So one of the mitigating ideas that's going to protect these kids is that there's going to be channelization of the road, it's going to be narrower, there's going to be the psychology that makes people slow down, there's going to be signs.
And there'll be sidewalks.
And there'll be sidewalks. There'll be sidewalks on the right side of the road, and there'll be parking spots. Kids dart out between cars. It's perfect. Now, I'll give you five miles an hour, I think that was the number that was stated, that people will be traveling five miles an hour less. But what happens when a kid darts out between two cars? You perform an evasive maneuver. You will have less ability to do that on this narrower road. So I figure this is a wash. People are going five miles an hour slower, but they have less ability to avoid these kids. And there's a lot of kids there, and we're going to add more kids, that are going to move in. So I think that we are basically putting more cars right next to kids, and setting up a situation that is putting them at risk. And I don't think we should do that. I think we're looking at this mathematically, but we're picking out factors that are, we're not looking at all the factors. So you might be going slower, but you're not going to be able to avoid them when they dart out. There's going to be 330 more cars there, there's going to make, they're going to make a lot of trips, there's going to be more kids there, the town is growing. So I think we have to think about the kids, and putting in this development right next door to these ballfields, for that reason.
Thank you. Jeff, how many parking spaces are there, parallel parking, on that side of the road? Do we know?
Was eighteen--
I believe it's 18.
18?
Yeah, and that has not changed.
Has anyone considered, I know this is outside the scope, but expanding the existing fieldhouse parking lot, to take the pressure off of that parallel parking on Beale Street? I know, that's a little bit creative, but I--
Yeah.
I know it's--
We have not studied it.
Is that something worth considering, maybe, or is that just--
This allowed us to wrap in the sidewalk improvement, and tighten up that whole edge, plus we know people park there today. I can tell you who, who on November 3rd, it's freezing, and you've got little kids, they're out there, everyone parks up there. So it's a condition that we can make better, and the comments that we received, again, the psychology, it's real, you know, hey, a kid, it's tight, there are kids, people slow down, they don't just plow on through. So I think between the, we call them fog lines, et cetera, but with everything that comes here, it's, I would suggest that it's the opposite of, you have less evasion area, but it's more, it's more, when you neck down, people slow down, because psychologically, you know you don't have a lot of options, and that's what you do, you just, you slow down. So one, one school of thought is, the more that you put there, you know, there's going to be more hit, et cetera, when, what I've been hearing for, you know, a few decades now, is that's exactly what you do, to calm people down, you present these different barriers. The more that you have, for example, I know, vertical, vertical barriers, the higher it is, the more psychological it is, parked cars, legally parked, with stripes, next to this parking, sidewalk, I would suggest it's a really good design, and it's a nice way for us to tighten up that gap, because that's the gap that I see, it's the gap between where the buses come in at the Terry entrance, all the way to where we are. And I look at that today, and we know it's, in some areas, it's a gully, but in other areas, it's that mound, where it bounds up. And it's, it's a mess, it's not regulated, it's not engineered, it's just kind of a country shoulder. This allows us to tighten all of that up, and, you know, so far, the comments that we've got is that it's a good solution, extra parking, plus it provides for all of those, you know, those neck-down attributes. So I, it just, it seems that the reaction to that, pretty quickly, was that that was a good, a good design.
And just, also--
Could you stand up, sir?
The physical pavement area in that area is not, it's not getting any narrower, from the standpoint of, if we want to call it evasion area, it's just paint. So we're not physically, in this area, the median's not there, so the physical area that exists to do an evasive maneuver hasn't changed. We're purely narrowing the road by means of striping a bicycle lane, striping parking spaces, but the amount of area that you have to maneuver is not changing at all.
I was just considering, if we could add 20 or 30 spaces behind the fieldhouse, maybe that would be a way to--
I'd only mention, we spent some time working with the sports partnership on the fields, and I think one of the challenges, particularly with, as the fields approach the fieldhouse, against the parking lot, the fields are very tight. There was actually, there was some research we made, as far as expanding the fields themselves. So I think, I think another, just knowing what I've known from working on that, we did do some engineering studies, again, not for the parking, but for the fields, and I think it would probably substantially further erode the actual playing surfaces. So, you know, that would be up to the town, if that was something they were willing to do, would be to cut those fields. But, no, those fields, I do know, came right up to the parking area by the fieldhouse, so there would have to be some trade, and that would be, of course, up to the town.
And on the backside, what we did was, we took a look, they're constricted, because they've got one regular-sized field, and the other one, I think, is only 80 yards. And that's constricted, because there's that swale--
There's a drop-off there.
Exactly. So the questions that they asked is, you know, can we take a look at, you know, if, in the future, they want to try to expand, you know, they'd have to move poles, et cetera, but we did take a look at that. So what we were tasked with was, trying to move things around on the, kind of the limited footprint of where the grass is, and it's a lot, when you actually look at it in plan form, and you look at the topo, it's a lot tighter than it looks. So the prospect of throwing in another row of parking, et cetera, physically, you know, problematic, and then, you know, again, more impervious, you know, away we go.
Okay.
But we did look.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Jenkins, these are not traffic questions, but they're very quick questions. First of all, Mr. Tacho, what's the cost of a two-bedroom apartment, the monthly, a monthly lease for a two-bedroom apartment in your, like, average?
We're projecting, right now, $2,400, of course, you know, that would change, but there's about 20 months from construction start, so this, you know, the market certainly could change, but today's numbers, it would be in the mid-2000s, depending on the unit type, location, floor, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. And this is affordable, not Section 8, right? I mean, part of, a little section, piece of it. And could you explain, we were playing Mahjong last night, and we got all confused about what means what. So explain, give us the quick definition of the difference between affordable and Section 8 housing, please.
Sure. Sure. So Section 8, there's quite a bit of confusion about what Section 8 used to be, and what it is now. Section 8 is no longer a program to develop housing, and it is not a designation any longer for units. There is no sort of Section 8 unit. We do designate units as affordable, under 40B, and I'll come back to that in a moment. Section 8, at this point, is a federal voucher program. Anybody can apply and qualify, and get put on a waiting list, and it is a, I don't know the exact formula for how the voucher works, but effectively, you can lease any unit, a market rate unit, or an affordable unit, and you use your voucher as a subsidy to whatever else you can afford. And that federal formula takes into account your family size, and your income, et cetera. So a Section 8, right now, and this has been the case for a number of decades, is literally a monthly voucher program that subsidizes rent. It can happen in any, anywhere, not even, not just in a 40B. It certainly could happen in a 40B. It could happen, I've seen it in a market rate unit, as much as an affordable rate unit, depending on the resident's qualifications. So the second is, there's a lot of confusion about what the affordable program is in a 40B, and some of this has changed over the years. Right now, what we're proposing is what's called moderate-income units. So we would qualify residents based on 80, excuse me, 80% of the area's median income. In the area right now, for Greater Boston, it's dictated annually by the Housing and Urban Development Department, and it's 98, excuse me, 99,500. I might be off by 50 bucks there. So if you make 80% of that, and this varies, again, based on your household, so if you're a single, or you're a couple, you know, of course, the number changes based on your head count. So basically, what 40B is targeting right now, is to combat what we call the brain drain. So we have a structural problem, and it's part of the reason why 40B exists, where it's so hard to create new housing, our prices are very high. And particularly high for those who are just out of college, and are well-educated, and are local, people that grew up here. So I'll give you an analogy, this is broadly what we see. A 23-year-old, or 24-year-old, directly out of college, does not have roommates, or a girl or boyfriend, it is impossible for them to afford a one-bedroom rent, at market rate, in Greater Boston, particularly in a nice town like Hingham, or any other nice town in Greater Boston. 40B is meant to be a temporary bridge for that demographic. What was happening in the early and mid-2000s, is the 23, 24-year-olds decided it was just too expensive here, based on the salaries they could gain, and they would leave. They would move to, you know, Houston, or Phoenix, or a place where rents would be roughly half, and their income would be about 80%. So a substantial increase, an improvement in their finances. That was a huge problem for Massachusetts, as we were losing population, again, the word was called "brain drain." So what 40B is not a low-income subsidy program, it's primarily targeted at what we would call today millennials, although that's a very broad designation, young professionals, college-educated, that Massachusetts wants to make sure they get to their 30, they eventually find a mate, have a family, and stay here and contribute to our economy. So that's really what 40B's for. 40B also does have a substantial amount of residents that are municipal employees. One of the main missions from the Massachusetts Department of Housing, is to keep teachers in the towns they grew up in, and you, a number, I have friends and family who are in the same situation, where you may or may not have grown up in a nice town like Hingham, and it's, on a teacher's salary, it's just very difficult to come back. So there's a problem where, if you were good enough to grow up here and get educated here, you ought to be able to afford to live in the town that you're going to be teaching children in. So we find a lot of fire, police, and teachers that also occupy these, including military veterans, who may qualify as well. So it's a good question. There's quite a bit of misinformation out there, and misunderstanding, but 40B and the moderate housing is really for our target market, which is young professionals.
Great. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to add to what Mr. Bajulian said. I don't, the majority of what he said is accurate, and millennials, and municipal employees, and others who are professionals or educated, can fit into the qualifications. There's very limited local preference under Chapter 40B. In fact, the town has to write a letter defending, under every 40B project, if it wants local preference, and it's up to the HCD whether we get it or not. So whether for this, or any other project, we can actually say, "We'll-- So, whether for this or any other project, we can actually say we'll accommodate people who are connected to Hingham in some way, grew up here, have family here, worked here, we can't guarantee that. So, I don't want people to have that impression that the children of Hingham, the schoolteachers of Hingham, the firefighters of Hingham will have some sort of leg up in these units. The other thing is, we do need to monitor all of the 40B units in Hingham. And currently in Hingham, there are very few millennials living in any 40B units. They are qualified people, they have the incomes in the range, so it's, as you said, it's not a low-income subsidy. So, they are people who make, in an objective standard in the United States of America, a good salary, but are, don't meet the income requirements to live in a town like Hingham. So, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was clear that there's really a broader base of individuals who might live in the 40B projects. But, the description of, you know, the Section 8 and the differences and all that, I agree that he described correctly.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just add one item, I think, I think we're underwriting and our market studies are projecting that roughly half of our product should be dedicated towards unit types specifically directed at that. And I agree with you that Hingham, particularly as a high-quality bedroom community, tends to have less of a millennial or a young professional base. That said, I, we think that the proximity to the transit and particularly the walkable retail is a major part of driving that. So, we may or may not, I don't know Avalon's numbers and you might, counselor, but, you know, we, we've spent a considerable amount of energy and time making sure we program the product for that. And we think that this micro-location is something that will, will probably perform a little bit more than some other communities may.
But, it's done by lottery, so you can't control that, right? I mean, it all depends on who applies and whose names get picked out of the hat, right?
Yes, I mean, in my experience, this is.
I just, I just don't want it to be represented beyond what the process is and what the current reality in Hingham is.
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of experience with the local preference piece and I know there's some unique pieces here, I'd be happy to talk with you, but there are ways, we've worked to maximize that capability to the greatest extent allowable, which you probably know, but, yes, that's correct.
If I can, to Mary's question, the other portion, that's only a certain percentage of these, so the other units are market, paying market rents under professional management, et cetera. So, you know, it's a situation where their business models rely upon, you know, certain constraints in management, et cetera. So, you'll know, you know, the management and those market rates will be there onsite, et cetera, all integrated as part of the overall community. So, that, that basically is worked for them as part of their business model, so it's another piece of the puzzle.
Yes, sir.
Mark Nicky, 14 Back River, I was just wondering, you know, parking along the street and children and movement has been a big concern. Is there any potential, and you may have already looked at this, for the developer to contribute, parking for the park on the west end of their property, close to or a part of where people, you know, that park and go in the back, the Back River Park over in that area, to kind of pull it off of the street and create a separate parking area? Just a thought.
Yeah, the short answer is we have, you know, a number of changes in the site's programming is really squeezed what we can do, particularly from an impervious surface and trying to be responsible with drainage and recharge. So, the short answer is, is, you know, I do think we have some supplemental, or we do have extra parking in our mix, of course, to protect ourselves, but I'm not sure at this point that there's really an opportunity or real estate to pull that off.
Got it. Okay. Jeff, was there anything else you wanted to accomplish other than schedules?
Yes, the architectural.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So, if we, yep, so if, we're going to have Brian O'Connor from Cube 3, if you folks ready?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Just one second, so, we're moving on to a different section, so I am going to ask the paid consultants that, to relieve the town and everyone of further billing by leaving and if there are other issues in your domain, we will direct them to you. Thank you, Susan.
I'm going to go relatively quickly through a very short presentation.
Just one second, so if people need to adjust their seating so to better view, please feel free.
A very short presentation, just to hit on a few of the points that came up at our last hearing and were addressed in our subsequent letter on the 25th of January. This board just shows a few views, there were some questions about what the project would look like from a massing standpoint across Beale Street and from Sergeant William Terry Drive. So, the first view here is really just to set the stage, as you approach the light at William Terry Drive, you could see on the left-hand side the edge of the fieldhouse and the Back River Townhomes, the open field and then flanked by the back of the Stop &amp; Shop on the right-hand side. As you come up to the light and you get a little bit closer, you can see in the left-hand side of the image a little bit more of the townhomes, you could see the open field and the mature tree line at the back edge of the park. And then as you get closer still, you could see the scale of the townhomes here along that tree line and the fieldhouse. If you were to turn around, the other side of the street, which we've spent a lot of time talking about from a traffic standpoint, but, but not really from any other standpoint, is really this fairly blank wall and an open parking lot. So, that's just really an orientation board. As, as you are at the traffic light looking across, across the field, you could start to see the mature tree line that's being maintained on the back edge of that field and you could see a little bit of the building behind that. The tree line itself is about 500 feet away from the edge of the road and the buildings themselves are another 100 feet beyond that. So, we're almost 600 feet back from the edge of the road in this view. And you can also see sort of the edge of the Back River Townhomes right here, this is sort of a spring, summer kind of view. What we haven't shown in this rendering or this quick overlay are any of the other landscaping improvements that we intend to make on our site. And really, all we're looking at is the mature trees along the edge there. No, I'm good, thanks. In the next view, we basically took the same thing and we looked at a more winter view. And what you can see here almost immediately is that there's a little bit more of the building that's visible along the edge, the distances are still the same. What's interesting is you can also see a lot more of the Back River Townhomes. And what may look slightly odd to everyone is that the Back River Townhomes in the view from Sergeant Terry Drive actually look larger than our buildings and that's because they're quite a bit closer. So, from the edge of the pavement here, where we're standing, to the, the edge of the Back River Townhomes is only about 400 feet away and the edge of the building over here is about 600 feet away. So, just, these are really not intended to be renderings, it's really just sort of a massing study so you can see the scale and the scope of the building. Another, another question that came up in the last hearing, we were, we were asked to relook at this rendering illustrating the new entry-drive configuration and the island at the entry to direct traffic out to the right, which we've spent a substantial amount of time talking about tonight. We also are, as discussed, maintaining all of the mature tree line.
You said to direct traffic to the right?
To the right, yeah. As you come out, as you come out of the entry drive, you would go right towards the back.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, right, 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 right.
East.
Yes, okay.
Yep. We are maintaining all of the existing tree, mature tree line in there. This is a winter view, I don't know if anyone remembers, but the last view, you could see virtually none of the buildings from this view, so we really peeled that back so you could get a sense of how, how the building would look. We're over 100 feet back from the edge of the road in this view and I think that, you know, when we did this rendering, a lot of the lower tree branches that actually would exist are pruned out, so this is pretty, fairly extreme, extreme view. Another thing that we talked about a little bit was kind of getting into a little more detail on some of the architectural details. This is a little easier to read on the 11-by-17s that were part of the package. We do understand that there were some subsequent comments to this about looking for another layer of detail, so we started looking at that today. And I actually have a few more details that we'd like to share with you, including a few dimensional requirements that, that were identified as desirable to have. What I'll do is I'll just kind of walk around this really, really quickly and AJ's going to help me, but I'm going to identify a few of the materials that we're proposing. So, the first thing, in these two views right here, we're talking about sort of, one of the primary materials here, if you could just grab the siding, is a, is a shake-style siding, which is very sort of traditional New England material, I don't know if you want to hand it to everybody. The materials we're proposing for the building are actually a cementitious hardboard that effectively has a 50-year durability lifespan, comes pre-finished, and it gives you the cedar shake look that's very tradition on New England and we would propose to use it in warmer earth-toned colors. These are, these aren't the colors we're proposing, it's really just the materials.
Adrian, if you could just lay it on so that you could see how they would stagger it, the idea is this is.
What's the reveal on those?
This is going to have a five-inch exposure, so it would be more than that. It would be, it would look, when these are laid, they actually read very much like a standard cedar shake. They're striated, they've got texture to them, they're not completely regular and they, they really do read like cedar shakes.
Show them to someone.
So, that's actually one of the more dominant building materials that we're proposing. We are also proposing a traditional lap siding, which I think Mike has right here, which is a similar, similar material, it's also a fiber-cement material. Again, the colors are not right, but that's a more traditional lap siding as Mike's demonstrating and this has an eight-inch exposure to it. And this is in all of the darker areas on the building, so you can start to see it here and in some of these areas back here. And we're really considering this to be a secondary material to the shake, so that there's more shake, a little bit less siding, but both are fairly significant materials on the building. We do also have areas on the building where we're bumping out a little bit. They're, they're not traditional bays, but places where the building kind of jogs in and out, we're proposing to use a material that is a similar material but articulated in a different way. It's more of a smooth panel that's broken down, it's also a fiber-cement panel, which has a different reveal pattern. I don't know if AJ has this, so instead of shakes or lap siding, it's a slightly larger panel that would have both horizontal and vertical reveals that are aluminum channels that it sits in. And that's really just for very small accent areas on the building, you can see one in the front corner here. We're also proposing porches that are wrapping around and again, you could start to see the pitched roof configuration on top of the porch. We're thinking about these porches as very traditional, very residential elements, we talked about them a little bit earlier, I have a little detail I'll show you again in a minute, actually, I'll show you right now. So, what, what we did is, we understood that, these are rough, I just handed these today because we wanted to try to quickly address some of your concerns. One of the questions we had was, you know, we see the building overhangs, how big are they? Are they really the size that you're showing them, what do they really mean? Because, you know, our assumption is you don't want cheap sort of contractor approach to this, so we're actually detailing a soffit at the top edge of the buildings with a fairly significant overhang of about three feet. So, we're proposing a pitched roof, an aluminum gutter on the edge, a very significant 12-inch fascia board at the bottom edge of the roof to give a nice, a nice solid read to the edge of the building, a three-foot overhang, and then we have trim boards where the overhang returns back to the building face. Another question was about the porches, so we've kind of drawn a quick detail of the porch here. The porches are typically about five foot six to six feet deep, so these are not, they're not little faux porches, they're real occupiable porches. We do have a header, almost a beam that runs across the top of the columns, which was not showing up in the rendering, so we're, we're actually detailing that. And that has about an eight-inch deep exposure. The porches have a 10-inch-high fascia board, so it's a little bit smaller than the top of the building. We don't really want to carry the same weight of trim down lower to the pedestrian because we really want to have a good scale to that. The columns themselves are about one foot six in diameter, so the drum of the column itself is fairly substantial. And we're proposing fairly detailed caps and bases to both of those, to all of those columns. We also have fairly traditional porch decking at the base of all those porches and then the bottom, down where it hits the ground, we're proposing a solid fascia board that connects the porch to the ground so that we don't have open space under the edge of the decks. There were some questions quickly about the windows, we're proposing basically either single-ganged doubles or triple windows, the typical size is about six feet high and three feet wide, so they're fairly significantly sized windows, we're not using tiny little glass areas. All of the windows are double-hung and we're proposing that they're actually divided lights at the top. So, we are looking for a much more traditional New England sort of historical feel to the windows with the divided lights that we think will connect to the Back River Townhomes.
So, those would be a real divided light.
We're, we're looking at options right now, they probably are not real true divided lights.
So, they'd have the mullions.
They would, yeah.
In between the panels of glass, yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways to do it, we're definitely looking at, at making sure the mullion patterns are traditional, whether they're, and they probably would be within the glass, yeah. One of the other questions related to some of the dimensional constraints of the building, so this is just a quick footprint of Building 1, and I just wanted to walk through a few of the typical ins and outs to these buildings. They do have a lot of articulation to them, which may not be always evident at the scale we're looking at them. We typically have bumpouts that are along the edge of the building where they jog in and out and the typical jogs are at least one foot six. At all of the inside corners, the change in plane is typically greater than six feet. At most of the outside corners, we have a break in the plane of greater than three feet. Again, here you can see this is six, these are greater than six. And then at the front edge of the building where it comes towards Beale Street, the building is set back, it's a little hard to see in some of these renderings, but the leading edge of the building, which is actually lower than the rest, is 30 feet closer to Beale Street. So, the tallest part of the building is pushed back 30 feet. And then along the entry drive, the setback is 11 feet at the upper level. So, I know this is just sort of a sampling of some of the detail that we think you guys were really trying to get to on the architecture of these buildings and, you know, we're happy to talk through any other questions you may have or provide any additional sort of layers of detail you think would be appropriate.
It does help a lot, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess, with respect to the windows, you, there's sort of two different window designs that are happening throughout the complex. So, you've got the double-hung, the traditional sort of double-hung, and then you've got the majority of the windows which are, I don't know what, casement or are they?
Yeah, there are also casement windows, that's correct. So, we're sort of mixing the double-hung and the casement and I'm, I'm happy to provide a detail exactly like that for the casement windows. We're, we're proposing typically, we're looking at 1-by-6 or 1-by-8 trim at the, at the heads and then we're typically looking at 1-by-4 or 1-by-6 trim at the jams and the, and the sills.
I just wanted to add, from a styling perspective, the casement windows are really only to fill in on the tertiary elements, so where you see, you know, we kind of have three stages of the materials, the primary material being, of course, the shake, the secondary material being the clapboard, again, the traditional styled clapboard. And then these third, these, what I call tertiary, the hardy panel in reglet areas, the goal is really to only have those to continue to create interest and not be a primary element. We just want those to make sure this whole thing just doesn't look like one giant, you know, similarly-clad box. So, we're using those really just to kind of add a little bit of interest and difference. Those are the locations where you'll note we're using casement windows, which are a little more appropriate for that. But again, those are not primary, the primary fenestration on the product is for, is the divided light four-over-one design.
But there are a fair amount of casements in that.
There are, primarily in these, like, these tertiary bumpouts here and at these corner elements, did I hit the right one, here?
Yep.
Thank you. And the, the exposure on the clapboard?
Yes.
You say eight inches?
Yes.
But, that's not even eight inches.
Yeah, that, that's a smaller sample, that's a, that's a material sample.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to get, get you whatever you guys need, we're proposing a, what we want to do is create a little variety in the texture, so when we have a. when we have a five-inch exposure on the shake, we want the texture of the shake and the exposure, but we don't want it to match up with the siding. So we're trying to get a little variety in there.
Now, the overhang, the three-foot overhang is depicted in the renderings, but the gutters aren't shown here, but the gutters are shown in the detail, but where do the downspouts go?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We actually probably need to show that, we could show the downspouts in the rendering.
I'd only add, in my experience, typically the gutters, the leader system and downspouts are designed build, so I mean, we could show you some samples about where they probably will lie, but some of those, some of those will end up being optimized based on roof pitch and direction. So it's difficult for us without actually designing the whole project to do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No.
Okay. Well, you know, what?
That's not the right answer.
No, wait. We'll lay out the downspout locations.
They're a very important part of the exterior design.
We'll coordinate them with the architecture, and if there are any places where they need to move during the design-build process, we'd certainly be happy to talk to you. We don't want downspouts all over the building in places that don't pull off.
Yeah, because they weren't on the initial renderings, and now the gutters are there, so where does the water go?
Yeah, we'll actually detail those on the building. There's a couple of things that we think are really critically important. Downspouts are one, locationally, and any penetrations that you're going to have through the building for vents or anything else, we always are really, really careful to integrate that into the design. So, I mean, Mike is very particular. He was probably acting like he isn't, but we're going to pay a lot of attention to that.
Yeah, but it is important.
It is.
Because they look, your eye goes right to them if they're not...
Absolutely. And you don't want, you don't want a lot of craziness, too. They get nutty, so.
Right, yeah, they get nutty, so.
Right.
Just one more, I guess, I'm still sort of trying to process the scale of the project. If you could go back to that initial rendering?
Sure.
The view from, from the intersection? That one, I think. It doesn't, the winter or summer, it doesn't matter. Is that, is that just one, is that building number two, and it doesn't show the front building, or is that?
Yeah, this is actually just building two, up to the end here. Building one is off around the corner, off the edge of the page there, so.
So it's almost twice that much more massive?
It's actually, it would read, you know, we can actually adjust the image to include one that shows both. It actually would not be anywhere near, because building one comes back towards this street, so you're looking at a much smaller exposure of that building. Even though you are looking to the inside corner, the exposure is less. We can certainly, certainly add that, for sure. Building two is quite a bit bigger than building one.
I tell you, the articulations have, I don't think it shows...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't. We haven't done a lot of work on rendering the building the way it would be. We kind of took the mass of it from the model and tried to insert it and keep all the trees accurate and get the scale right. There's a, there's a really big sort of inset to the building right here, which is all reading as very dark right now, so the whole thing is reading as a monolithic.
That was one of my issues with it. I looked at it, it just looks monolithic, and we know that it's not, but it doesn't, it's just not rendering.
Right, and also, also, there's a fairly large, there's a fairly large break in the architecture of the building right in the center of this piece as well, which is kind of lining up with all the traffic lights, which was another issue. So I think it's certainly, it's certainly feasible for us to take another view of this that broadens the scope to capture building one.
If you could see the entire width and breadth of it, that would be great.
Absolutely, yep.
That'd be great.
Okay. Oh.
So the latest drawings that you had, which were not part of our packet, do you have versions that you can submit to the?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great. Any comments or questions from the public on this aspect?
Just a really quick question.
Yeah, come on, you need, I'm sorry, but you need to come up, or else HKM will not be happy.
I'm just curious when lighting becomes a topic of conversation.
Well, we talked about that a little bit earlier. The review engineer for the town had reviewed the, what does he call it? The photogrammetric plan? The photo? The photometric plan.
Okay. Does it go into more depth?
Which shows the lighting and the spillover?
Right.
Which was very, very minimal in one back corner of the fields.
At some point, are we able to get a better, I, that didn't really give me a good sense of the kind of light I might look at at night as I face this directly without anything between...
I can tell you it won't be shining towards you.
Well, I'm just curious how much light there is.
You will see a glow, perhaps.
We won't see a glow?
No, I say you may see a glow.
Right, so I'm curious if at some point, as a butters, we might have a better understanding of the amount of light, both on the building, freestanding lights and headlights, because I don't have a good sense of that.
True. Just briefly, we, there is a photometric plan submitted, and the numbers on there, just for the layman, which took me a little while to learn. We've committed to, we've displayed that there is zero light spill at all, residential abutters certainly, so there won't be any light shining over a property line. There is one area where light does cross over a property line at the sports fields next to Building 1. But again, that's, it actually is, as it was previously mentioned, that light actually spills just at the base of a light pole for one of the sports fields. I will say that we've spent a lot of time thinking about light, and our lights are, the idea is for a dark sky compliant. It's basically as, as much as you can honor the naturalistic surroundings around us, we have. So that photometric plan, combined with our commitment to make sure we don't spill on any neighbors, is an important part of it.
And the headlights, too, she asked.
Oh, right, and then the headlights. So we've spent time, and you can see some of this on the grading plans in our submission, to make sure that we're not just using, we're not using vegetation and plantings to block. We actually have substantial topography changes from our parking lot to the property line, anywhere between four and six feet, mostly closer to six feet, which would be, of course, well taller than any car's headlights. So we're not going to just rely on evergreens and plantings. We actually have earth physically blocking any headlights that may shine. And again, I just remind you, it's 224 feet away, again, blocked by earth and substantial planting. So we feel very good that there'll be no headlight spill across into the Back River community.
Yes, sir.
Just a quick request. I mean, these renderings are great. They give us a great view of it from 1,000 feet away from the street. Could we see the view of the property and the building structure from the Back River neighbors who are abutting it? Because I think that's part of the concern.
Yeah, we've actually, we've actually submitted those views. We've done similar renderings with existing plantings in winter and summer from, there's approximately 10 to 15 feet between each home or each building, I should say, at Back River Townhome. Each building is, of course, two units together. So we've done views through in those limited amounts, and they've been submitted and are available. They have been adjusted also for the reduced story to four stories from the original fifth-story presentation. And we've also submitted balloon tests, which were requested, to show views from the, both from the neighboring community as well as from Bear Cove Park, and with other sort of surrounding views, including the Back River Townhomes community. So those are all submitted and online.
Nope. With that, I think that concludes everything that we wanted to bring by you folks this evening. I think, let's see, it's almost 9:25. I guess, are there any questions that you folks have for us? And our intent at this point is, I believe, we're looking at potential scheduling of, say, a month.
Yeah, what's our?
It's March 1st, or was our deadline, or?
No, no, no. The next hearing is March 1st, I believe.
Right.
And to the extent that, you know, we can use some of that time, we now have a good number of comments that have been appended to some of, some of the letters that we have from the experts, various departments. It might be a good time for us to begin looking at certain comments, and I know that the town, there's a favored set of conditions that would accompany a 40B. Perhaps it would be a good time for us to spend some time looking at that with your agent and special counsel. And to the extent that you folks could articulate, we've, we've had folks taking notes as to what more we could provide to you folks.
Right, and during the hearing, you've mentioned that you'd be providing additional material.
So if there's something we haven't thought of that you folks, you know, would want brought to the fore, it's a good time to give you that information. Just timing-wise, I think our intent would be to emerge in March, probably having some follow-up meetings that might have to be, you know, rather rapid sequence, just so that we don't get too deep into March with town meeting and other, other dates that are out there.
What are you proposing, Emily, other than the March 1st hearing?
Other than that, we're unscheduled. You do have a regular meeting on March 15th.
Yep.
And then an outside deadline of April 17th, so we'd be flexible in between to schedule any other meetings.
So the material that we are waiting to receive, I'm assuming that we will get it, or it'll come to the zoning board February 22nd, which is a week before the March 1st hearing, so that we'll be prepared to, we'll have reviewed it to the extent we need peer review. We can make sure that that happens.
So that's, that's school vacation week, so.
Oh.
But I would offer...
But in terms of them getting the material to us?
Getting the material to you guys is fine that day. It would be ideal if it could come back up a bit.
Sooner, absolutely, yeah.
Sooner, rather lighter, just so we can complete peer review and everything beforehand.
We don't need, the materials, at least in my notes, and I'll check certainly with the rest and make sure we're all on the same page. I don't think we need more than a week or two tops in order to assemble that. So we'll certainly work with you guys on how to dodge those.
Then our intent is going to be, for example, one of the questions that Mr. Durk had was the changes that we had on the, some of the traffic geometry, they're not reflected on the engineering plans, so he had said, you know, we need to see those. So we've been, and Emily's, and you folks have been very patient, and we've been submitting different sheets for discussion, but holding off on making wholesale changes to the, to the plan set, including fixing some inconsistencies. And our intent will be to be moving that towards a final plan set for you guys to have for your consideration on the 1st of March.
Okay. Okay. Do we have anything else other than this project for the March 1st?
Nope.
Great.
Oh, I'm sorry. You have one that is expected to withdraw, and then one administrative appeal. I apologize.
So I guess I'd be looking for motion to continue this to 7:00 PM on March 1st.
So moved.
Second. Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
We are continue to March 1st, 7:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hopefully.
But no, you'll be a Bionic.
It's 50/50, you're a new man. Which way is it going to be? How'd it go?
Okay, we've got some...
On updated plan.
Oh, well, thank you.
I hope you'll be a new man by the first.
If you don't, I appreciate that.
Okay, there are some.
Of course not.
They're all online, right? They're all online. There was new, some new material in there, just...
Oh, I'm sorry. What did we, what did we miss for you? Oh, okay.
Peer review, emails.
Joe, I hope you're surgery as well.
Hey, Will. Will, I'm, here's Hope.
Yeah, I suppose.
I have to go back.
I'm just...
That does stink.
I don't know why. It's supposed to be, it's supposed to be two weeks ago, but I've got this, whatever the hell this sickness is.
That's why you missed, right?
Yeah. Jeff, believe me.
Oh, I know. Man, I know. Believe, believe me, I know. Psychologically, to do that, 20, 20... It's not easy.
20, almost 24 years, I've never missed a...
You may be right.
I figured I was entitled to one.
That's when it opened?[1741.47]